Good evening. Welcome to the stated January 4 regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for being here. Thank you for watching. It should be on. Are we on, Rowan?
Yes.
Very good. Very good. Well, tonight the invocation will be given by Dr. Kirk Dean, Longdale Baptist Church. We'll ask everyone to stand and following that, we'll ask Commissioner Richardson to give the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Please stand if you're able.
Where's the flag?
Where is the flag? We'll have to find it.
Let me begin by just saying it is a tremendous honor to be able to lift you in prayer to our Lord. Let's bow our heads. Lord Jesus, we do thank you for the blessing of this day. We know that you have ordained the day. You have given us life in it. And first and foremost, it is to bring you glory.
Amen.
I pray for these dear commissioners tonight for Chairman Hall and Vice Chairman Berger, for Mr. Pertle, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Travis, certainly for all the others that will be on the agenda tonight. Guide and direct them. Lord, your word tells us that you are the purveyor of wisdom and if we lack wisdom, we can ask of you and you promise to give it abundantly without reproach. Bless this dear group that is here tonight, that our residence might be served and that all things will be done in accordance with your will and for your glory. And we pray this in the name that is above all names, the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
In lieu of a flag to the front of you, we have three smaller flags in front of you.
Please face us and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Jennifer, where's the flag?
Well, we're making note to be sure to have a flag next meetings. Folks, we work from a pre-approved agenda.
You've got one.
And tonight, the agenda is before you. It has been published. We've all had time to review it. Are there any changes or updates?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the following addition under new business, remove the CDGB update. Is that right?
Very good. Do we have a second?
You would have a second if you would include delaying 5A until further, until a future meeting.
Very good. Very good. Would you amend your motion?
I will.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any further changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. Our agenda is set. Well, that brings us to recognitions. I'll ask Commissioner Richardson if he will make the presentation. And we have with us tonight, Mr. Bob Cleveland, who will let him do, he's with the PTRC, has to do with the elderly and aging commission here in the community. And gentlemen, I'll ask if the three of us could gather behind this and Commissioner Richardson and I will get on the front of the dais.
While we're getting set up, I want to thank you, Bob, for coming in and representing two longtime serving members. Tom Alderman and Mr. Pascal have been serving the senior citizens as well as other members of this community and citizens of this county for quite some time. So it's a little bit lengthy and I know you get tired of wear as, but I'm going to ask our county manager if he would to read these two resolutions for us in honor of Mr. Alderman and Mr. Pascal.
Yes, sir. Resolution honoring Elmer Thomas Tom Alderman, whereas Elmer Thomas Tom Alderman was born on July 2, 1948, in Rayford, Virginia. And in 1949, his family moved to Madison, North Carolina, where they still reside. And whereas Tom Alderman attended UNC Chapel Hill from 1966 to 1970, during which time he married his wife Cynthia Jane White on December 8, 1968. And they are now celebrating 52 years of marriage. And whereas Tom Alderman worked for Burlington Industries for nine years and then for Miller Brewing for 30 years, retiring in 2008, at which time he began a consulting company that supported brewing industry packaging equipment until 2020. And whereas Tom Alderman is an active member of Ellisboro Baptist Church, serving in various positions over the years, including Sunday School teacher, deacon, is currently on the Board of Trustees and also is servant on the Board, bless you, directors for the Rockingham County Council of Bible Education. And whereas Tom Alderman has further given of his time serving on the Rockingham County Planning Committee for the elderly and disabled for 15 years, serving as chairman for the last six years, he has also been a member of the Madison Mayhem Gideon Camp, the Dan Valley Missionary Baptist Association Executive Board and has supported and organized many fundraisers to benefit organizations such as the American Cancer Society, Leukemia and the Lymphoma Society and the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, which he has been involved with for 40 years. And whereas Tom Alderman has enriched Rockingham County by faithfully serving his community, family and the county, now therefore be it resolved that the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Elmer Thomas Tom Alderman for his many years of service to the Rockingham County Planning Committees, Planning Committee for services to the elderly and disabled and further expresses its appreciation for his decades of service to Rockingham County and his community. Adopted this fourth day of January 2021. All right, hold on one second. All right, here we go. Resolution honoring Garland E. Pascal, whereas Garland E. Pascal, a lifelong resident of Rockingham County, married Geneva Cobb from Castle County and they raised three daughters here. And whereas Garland E. Pascal was employed in public education for 33 years, serving the students of Rockingham County as a teacher of Williamsburg Elementary for eight years and as a principal there as well for 25 years. And whereas Garland E. Pascal worked for over 20 years to help secure the historical documentation needed to acquire the historical marker designating the Williamsburg community as the site of the first free public school in Rockingham, in North Carolina, excuse me, dating back to 1840. And whereas Garland E. Pascal's service to Rockingham County Schools continued over time with his employment as Director of Elementary Education, Director of Chapter One and Migrant Education, Director of Middle Schools and Assistant to the Superintendent of Rockingham County Schools. And whereas Garland E. Pascal also served in other areas, including Rockingham County Schools Alternative Program for Long Term Suspended Students, sponsored by Rockingham County Youth Involvement Services and at Rockingham Community College as a part-time GED, Adult Basic Education Instructor for 11 years. And whereas Garland E. Pascal served in many county organizations which spanned working with youth to the elderly, which included Rockingham County Youth Involvement Services Board, Boy Scouts, Rockingham County 4-H Club, receiving the 4-H Leader Award, the Rockingham County Head Start Policy Board and the Rockingham County Planning Committee for Services to the Elderly and Disabled for 24 years. And whereas Garland E. Pascal has enriched Rockingham County by generously giving of himself and sharing his time and abilities with its citizens of all ages, now therefore be it resolved by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners that Garland E. Pascal be honored for his work in education, his generous community spirit and his contribution to the citizens of Rockingham County. Adopted this fourth day of January 2021.
Thank you. And Chairman Hall and I have been, have had the great honor and pleasure to serve with both Mr. Pascal and Mr. Alderman for several years. And so I'm going to give the chairman a chance to say something. Then Bob, thank you so much for coming over to accept this. Bob has served this county for a long time as well. But I can think of nobody better to stand in their stead today.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. I can just say that I serve on this committee with these gentlemen and they've been invaluable to the community. And so they've been so thoughtful in contributing their time and their efforts to the cause of care for the elderly. So we appreciate your service, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just like to add that, as Commissioner Richardson said, that these gentlemen have served this community for many, many years, dedicated volunteer service and truly are passionate about serving the needs of older adults, of persons with disabilities in the community. So even though they are stepping down from the committee this year going forward, I'm sure they're going to be, continue to be involved in other ways. So again, I'm happy to accept this recognition. We'll make sure that we get it to them.
I'll give you one for your left hand and one for your right hand. And a photo op there from Ms. Mike.
Consent items are items, and unless there's an issue, we all approve those. They're generally routine business. If you have any questions about those, you can take that up with our county manager and he'll be happy to answer those questions. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Consent agenda has passed. Our next item is public comment and we had no one sign up to speak tonight. So with that, we'll move on to item eight, Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2019/2020 Adjusted Audit, excuse me, Audited Financial Report. And Tim McNish, Elliott Davis Auditing Firm, is he, are they going to present?
Tom has his time. He has another obligation, suddenly in. I'm not going to kind of spell out what they were saying. She's going to present. You should have copies of the audit reports in front of you now. They are marked draft. I wanted to explain the LGC is not through yet. They end with the LGC at 7 November. And until we get their final approval, we can't take the draft off. And that's, we'll get you updated, clean copy, which is as soon as we can find, publish and buy the final copies. There should be no changes. We don't see any changes.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, I did. It's just hard to see the screen a little bit. Good evening. My name is Leanne Bogasala and I'm a Senior Audit Manager at Elliott Davis. And as you mentioned, I'm standing in for Tom McNish tonight. He is the shareholder of the engagement. So he's the one that's ultimately responsible for signing your audit opinions, which we'll go over tonight. But I was the manager in charge throughout the entire audit. So we do have a quick disclosure here if you would like to read it. But basically, I'm going to go through everything that's in these slides. And if anytime you have any questions, please let me know. I'm trying to make the presentation brief and to the point, but please stop me if you have any questions. And before we begin, I do want to thank the finance team for Rockingham County and the various members from DSS and other grant organizations that helped us. We asked a lot during several months and we got everything we needed on a timely basis. So for the presentation tonight, I'm going to go through a couple financial statement highlights and then I'm going to go to, go through the required communication to governance and then last, I'm going to go over the audit results. So on your slide today, we're going to go through four of the biggest funds for the county. The first one is a general fund. And as you can see in the current year, revenue for the general fund was about 90.2 million, which is consistent with the prior year. And then from an expenditures perspective, the general fund incurred 80.6 million, which is actually very consistent with the prior year and is $3.4 million less than what was originally budgeted. So I did want to pinpoint that. And the fund balance for the current year is 41.6 million, which we're going to go over a little bit on the next slide. So this graphic is a little hard to read, but overall, what we want to show you here is that the general fund is your fund that spends the most money. And on a yearly basis, there was almost $87 million that ran through the general fund. And if you look at that from a monthly perspective, it takes about $7.2 million to fund the general fund. And this table basically is a graphic showing you, if the revenue for the general fund stopped today, you have enough fund balance to cover the general fund expenditures for 4.4 months, which is greater than what you've had in the past. So that's just a graphic to kind of show you how your fund balance could be used. Another thing I wanted to point out here is that the local government commission or the LGC, they recommend that your fund balance for the general fund have an 8% reserve for the expenditures that were just incurred. And Rockingham County actually upped that requirement and they have a policy to have 16%. And if you look at this graphic, in FY '20, there was actually 37% reserved in your fund balance. So that shows you just, you know, the dedication to making sure that you have a healthy fund balance. And that's up 4% from the prior year. So there's three other funds I want to go through. Your water fund, just to give you an overall analysis, the water fund operating revenues expenditures are very consistent with the prior year. There wasn't anything that happened in the current year that wasn't expected. The net position did increase in the current year, but that was due to transfers in, which are budgeted as well. From the sewer fund, it's the same story from the water fund. You had an increase of revenue, you had an increase of expenditures, and then your net position did increase a little bit, but that was due to transfers in. The biggest change you'll see this year is in the landfill fund. And the landfill fund, the revenues were very similar to the prior year, but in the current year, the expenditures increased $3.4 million. And the only reason I wanted to kind of pinpoint that is because it's a lot of increase in the current year, but that was due to the landfill closure and post closure costs, which is determined by outside party. They go in and determine what's the capacity used on the landfill and based on that, you would recognize expenses. So that is one of the things that happened this year. Okay. So that's your financial statement highlights. And if you have any questions, please let me know. But next, I just kind of want to give you an overall overview of what we're required to communicate, communicate to governance. As part of our audit, we go through a very rigorous planning exercise before we even begin the audit. That includes members from Elliott Davis and from also Rockingham Finance. And based on that process, we determine what we're going to audit, the nature, extent and timing of our audit procedures. We also come up with a materiality for the audit, which basically means I don't audit every single piece of paper that flows through finance. I use judgment on what I'm going to audit. And then also part of our process is to walk through internal controls. We don't opine on internal controls and whether they work. Our audit isn't designed to discover material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, although you will note, sometimes we do discover some internal control processes that need improvement. From auditor's responsibility, we'll go through that when we're going through the audit opinions. From a significant accounting policy standpoint, the Rockingham County is responsible to determine what accounting policies they follow. And those are included in your CAFER that's in front of you in Note 1, which are very similar to all the other governments in North Carolina. In addition to that, management is in charge of determining what accounts need judgment or estimates. And the biggest estimates that you would see on your financial statements is the useful life of fixed assets and the depreciation that's used. And then also, there is some judgment used when you're determining your pension and your OPEB liabilities and expenditures. And then in your CAFER, there is about 60-ish pages of financial disclosures for you to read. I am required to tell you that you can read them. And then another thing that I'm required to communicate to you is if there's any corrected or uncorrected misstatements as part of the audit. So you received a letter, which was dated November 13, 2020, that included two uncorrected audit misstatements. One was related depreciation for the landfill. We determined that depreciation was understated by $11,000, which is very immaterial in the grand scheme of Rockingham County. Therefore, management did not post that entry. That's a judgment call and we were perfectly okay with that. And then there's another uncorrected misstatement related to OPEB for the prior year, and that was determined by the actuary. And again, that was very immaterial, so that was not posted. And there is one correct misstatement that we'll go through when we go through the opinions. Other than that, the only other thing I'm required to communicate to you is that management does provide us with a management representation letter as part of the audit. We get that, we have to have that in order to issue. If there was any disagreements with management, I would tell you at this time, but there wasn't any. Additionally, management is allowed to consult with other auditors or other accountants throughout the year if they have any questions or they, you know, want a difference of opinion. And we, to our knowledge, they did not do that during the year. And then throughout the audit, we do discuss with management any significant issues, anything that's come up, like new accounting pronouncements or anything like that during the year. There was no new implementation of county policies in the current year. The biggest piece of discussion that we of course had was related to COVID-19. If there was any difficulties encountered during the audit, I would tell you, but there was none. And we did identify a significant deficiency and a material weakness as part of our audit procedures, which we'll go through in the next slide. So in conclusion, we basically issue four audit opinions. You have a financial statement audit opinion, which on this slide shows you what is the auditor responsibility and what's management's responsibility. And at the end of the day, your audit opinion was an unmodified audit opinion, which is a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give you. We also issue what's called a government auditing standards opinion or a yellow book opinion. And again, for this opinion, this is included in your compliance report. We did not identify any issues in internal controls that we consider to be significant deficiencies, but we did identify one finding that we considered to be a material weakness. And that finding was an overstatement of a receivable balance in the landfill fund. And just due to the amount of it, we determined that was a material weakness. But management did correct that entry and reduce AR to the appropriate amount. And then during our testing, we noted no other instances of non-compliance. And the last two opinions we issue is over your federal and state grants. They're two separate opinions. We audited lots and lots of money that the county receives during the year and we go in and audit based on your federal regulations, your state regulations and what we call OMB Circular or the Uniform Guidance. And based on the audit, we determined that the county complied in all material aspects with the compliance requirements that are applicable to those federal and state programs that we audited, except for one item, which we identified a significant deficiency for Medicaid eligibility. Basically, we went in and tested 93 case files and there was eight case files that was missing some piece of documentation. It didn't affect whether the person was actually eligible, but there was just a little bit needed to be added to the file. And that did get added, so that was corrected. And then here's your summary of the findings that we had that we've already discussed. And that's it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Gentlemen, any questions? Any comments?
Just thanks to you and recognition of our own staff for their participation and our county manager riding herd on it.
I agree.
I mean, they do, it's not, it's finance, Pat and Justice and Arnold, who they have a really good time to make sure that we're physically responsible.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Pat, and your department. We appreciate everything. Thank you, Ms. Leanne.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight. We appreciate it. With that, that takes us to item nine, Dr. Mark Kenlaw. And I see Dr. Tony Gunn as well, here to give us an update on the Workforce Development Center. Thank you for being with us tonight, gentlemen.
of our Quartercent Sales Tax projects. To go back to May of 2018, just again, thank you for believing in our college and putting it on the ballot. And of course, thank you to the citizens of Rockingham County for also believing in us and thinking it important enough to invest in our college and also invest in the county's future with the approval of it back in that, in May of 18. I can tell you from an administrative standpoint, we've been very, very busy since that time. Of course, we started drawing the funds, I think in the beginning of the year of 2019. It went into effect October of 2018. And we've been very busy with a number of projects and we now thankfully have some physical evidence of some of our work, which we'll share in just a minute. Dr. Tony Gunn, of course, is in charge of all of our facilities and external affairs. He handles all of our capital projects. We have another gentleman that assists him, Caleb Rohr. And so Tony is going to come up in just a couple of minutes to talk about our new Center for Workforce Development, because he is managing that project. And I know there's a lot of questions in the community about, you know, why is it not already started? Well, there's, there's a lot of reasons for that. Tony will take you through where we are with it, the schedule and some of the work that we have to do. We do have to go through the Office of State Construction, which we have mentioned before. That does tend to slow down the process, but at the same time, in the end, they do save us money. They are managing hundreds and hundreds of projects. If you remember back in 2015, the state passed a state bond referendum. And so you have community colleges and universities, parks and others across the state still submitting those projects to the state that have to be managed and overseen by the Office of State Construction. Anything over 500,000 has to go to them. So if we want to do a renovation on campus for over 500,000, we have to go through them. And so it does take a little longer. And so that's, that's just what we have to deal with. And I've been through two other buildings at a previous community college and it does take time, but in the end, it will save us money. So Tony will come up and give you a good sense of where we are with the new center. We're very excited about it. In fact, we're meeting Monday of next week to start picking out all the colors and the decor inside. We've already picked out the brick and the exterior. Now we have to pick out a lot of what goes on the inside. And so he will share a lot of that with you. So we are making good progress. Of course, the, the building is going to serve our advanced manufacturing programs, which you know there is a great need for that in this, in this county and also in this region of the state. And so we want to be ready to serve those students. We can, we can handle those students now, but this is going to be a great enhancement of what we're able to do and an expansion of what we can do. So I'll get Dr. Gunn to come up and share that with you and we'll certainly answer any questions about the building. And then we'll move on to a few more projects that I'll share with you that we, that we're currently working on. And I'll invite any of you and any of, any citizens in our county that want to come and see what we're working on. We'll be glad to take you around campus and show you some things that we've done with the Quartercent Sales Tax revenue. Be glad to sit down in our boardroom and take you through where we are with the building. So with that, I'll call Tony to come up.
Thank you, Dr. Kenlaw. As Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and give you an idea of where we are with the Center for Workforce Development. And of course, the Center for Workforce Development is the major use of our Quartercent Sales Tax funds. This is a 42,000 square foot building estimated to cost $19 million. It will be housing our advanced manufacturing programs. These include our computer integrated machining, our electrical systems and also our industrial systems programs. Other features in the building will be housing our customized training for industry and also our small business center. The project, I'm pleased to say, is on, is moving ahead and on schedule. We are now in the third and final stage of design. We are now in the third and final stage of design. This stage will produce the final plans for the building, and once these plans are approved by the state, we'll go out for construction bids. At the moment, as Dr. Kenlaw mentioned, we're making decisions about how the interior of the building will look. We've met with our architects, talk about paint, carpet selections, finishes, things like that. We're also deciding where equipment goes, where projectors, where screens go, the layout of the labs, and also looking at security, you know, where security cameras going, other measures like that. What I'm showing you now are renderings of the building's interior. This is the front entrance, main lobby here. And this is a picture of our corporate meeting space, which will seat close to two hundred people. This is be a great service to industry, to businesses wanting to come in and hold a meeting on our campus. We expect to go out for bids on this project next September, begin construction in December, and move into the building in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. And now I'd like Dr. Kenlaw to tell you about some of the other projects that we're using Quartercent Sales Tax funds for.
Are there any questions about the building before we move into a few other things that we've, that we'd like to show you that we've done with Quartercent Sales Tax?
Yeah, Commissioner Travis.
Dr. Gunn, based on the events that's going around the world with this COVID, or is that changing your ideas and plans on how you want to build this building with the COVID pandemic?
Well, the building, we're taking that into account, but fortunately, with the funds that we have here, it's not interrupting the schedule for planning of the building. And so we're able to proceed at the same pace that we were before. And then, and then we're, you know, looking at creating individual offices in the building with COVID in mind as opposed to an open space. So some things like that.
The reason I brought up, I know the county's implementing laser to kill germs through the heating and air system. I didn't know if you was going to change yours, or that heating and air would have that laser stuff to kill any circulation of germs.
We'll look at that, and be glad to look at that. At the moment, we've got a fantastic maintenance staff, and they're doing a very good job, I think, keeping us safe.
Help them put that out there for, you know, citizens, say, hey, you know, we're taking precautions, man, and help you out.
Sure, I'll get some more details on that from Lance. We'll be glad to look at that. Thank you. Anything else?
Gentlemen, continue on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What we have up here on the screen is the revenues that we've collected to date, and then, of course, the expenditures, and so we are spending that money as it comes through. There's a lot of things that need to be done on campus in addition to having the building. And let me say that the beauty of the Quartercent Sales Tax, and I've tried to say this publicly in as many meetings as I possibly can, this is way beyond my time. But the Quartercent Sales Tax is going to provide the revenue to allow us to be able to train at the highest level and to be able to make sure that our, the students that come to us are trained so that they have an advantage when they go and try to get a job. And that's what we're trying to do. And so over a long period of time, we're going to be able to use the Quartercent Sales Tax to make sure that we can replace equipment and to continue to do renovations as we have to, to make sure that, that we are training at the highest level. You know, we're state-of-the-art, but we're training at the highest level. That's, that's the beauty of it. So let me just show you a couple of things that we've done. We have spent about a half a mil, about a, at least a half a million dollars on technology upgrades in our classrooms. This would be projectors, screens, smart boards, all of those types of technology things that we need to enhance the teaching and learning environment. We have also had, this is in our advanced technology building, which is where our auditorium is. We have put in two new labs, an information technology lab, which greatly enhances our information technology program. These are high-end computers that allow us to, to train for national credentials that we are able to provide as part of that program. So this is, this was completed and in place this past August. Right beside it is a cybersecurity lab. As you know, in the world we're in now, the cybersecurity issues are critical, and so we have installed a lab there that allows us to train students to work in that aspect of the, of information technology. So those two labs are adjacent to one another in our advanced technology lab, our advanced technology building, so we have used Quartercent Sales Tax for both of those projects. We're also in the middle of the back of our campus. We have, we have started an agribusiness program this past August, and we have purchased a new greenhouse. It is a fabulous greenhouse. It's state-of-the-art. I'll invite you to drive back there and look at it. We have also enhanced our horticulture building to make it, to make us more ready to do agribusiness. And so this is another, I think, excellent way to spend Quartercent Sales Tax, is to start up that program and get it ready, and so it is up and running, and so we're very pleased with it. We've got a little bit more work to do back there. We've got a storage building that we're getting ready to build that will house a lot of the equipment, so that will finalize some of what we want to work on with our agribusiness program. So we're excited about that as well. So those are some visual evidence of some of the things that we're doing. We have also greatly enhanced the Wi-Fi access on our campus for our students and our faculty and staff. We've purchased a lot of computers for, in our computer labs, probably in the neighborhood of four hundred and seventy-five to five hundred computers that help us to, to get to cycle out our, our computer labs. We like to be able to cycle those out every four years. We've also been able to purchase a number of about sixty-five computers for staff and about thirty computers for faculty. So that's, again, more of your Quartercent Sales Tax. The whole idea is to enhance the teaching and learning environment. That's what this is all about, and it's to make sure that we can train at the highest level with our students. So we're looking forward to continuing to come back and provide you with some, some evidence of some of the work that we've done. We have, we, of course, had a program with Mabel Scott the other day, right before Christmas, to talk about the Quartercent Sales Tax and some of what we've done. We also talked a little bit about the state bond referendum and some of those projects. And we've also done our own video that we're, that we're in the process of putting out on Facebook and other social media, showing some of the things that we're doing. And we'll continue to do those types of things to try to inform the public and, of course, continue to come back and speak with y'all. So anytime that anyone wants to come out and see what, see what we've done, we're glad to show that to you. But we're real excited about the future. I think the next two to three years, you're going to see a dramatic impact of your Quartercent Sales Tax on our campuses. We've got a number of really exciting projects on, on the table. So with that, that concludes our, our update. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, would you share with us how you intend to use our PEG station and your own TV station and website to keep the public informed?
Well, we, good question. We have on our website, when you go to our website, it is on our, it's up on the main page. You can, you can click on Quartercent Sales Tax, and it will show you all the projects that we're working on, and it also has some visual. We've, we'll be doing more videos and putting that out on social media, and some of those can go on our website as well. Every now and then, we will, we will do a mail out to the entire, to all the citizens of the county. We can do a postcard showing some of the things that we've done. We will put this on our channel as well, so those things that, as we talk, we're going to go and see Mabel Scott about every two or three months and continue to do this, and I think she'll put them on your channel, and also, that is also edited and sent over to us, and we can put it on our channel. So we'll do more of that, particularly as we have more physical evidence to show you some of the things that we're doing and give you a good update each, as much as we can on the building. Any other questions?
Commissioner Perdell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Kenlaw, I know your Board of Trustees has been involved in your help prioritizing some of these projects that you, that you have. Could you elaborate?
They're involved, they're involved in all of our capital projects.
And so they are helping you not only just prioritize these, but they're significantly involved in?
Yes, in fact, we have two, two of our board members, they're on, they're meeting with us as we, as we talk to the, our architectural firm. We have two that are assigned to that, to that committee that meet with us regularly, and they have provided us some very good advice. So yes, they're heavily involved. We, we take all these, all these capital projects to them.
And can you share with us, I think you have updated, did some updates on your website about where the information that could be found on how these projects are evolving, the timeline, as well as the executables with the costs associated?
Yeah, all of that's on our website, and, you know, you go to our main page, and you can click on Quartercent Sales Tax, and it'll take you to it.
Okay. And, and I think we was looking at trying to link our, something off our website so that we could?
Yes, and I think we provided that information right before Christmas, if I, if I remember right, yes. Any other questions?
Gentlemen, well, you alluded to briefly that you have already started some classes. Is that correct?
We, we start spring semester next Monday.
Wonderful.
Yes.
And including that, it sounds like you've already started some of these courses that have been developed with this money. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Agribusiness started last August. The cybersecurity started last August, and that, we are now working on construction trades, and we hope to have that up and running in August. And that's still in the development stage, and that'll be some of the update that we'll provide later in the spring, but we're excited about that as well. That will be Quartercent Sales Tax, and we'll talk more about that as we get deeper into the spring. But we've got, got some more work on that, and, but I'll be able to share more as, as time goes on on that. And we're also in the middle of our Industrial Technology Two building. We are, we will be renovating it using mostly state bond money, but also some Quartercent Sales Tax, and that will be a welding building exclusively. And so we're working on that, which will greatly expand what we can do in welding. So there's some exciting things, so those, we'll be able to share more as we get deeper in the spring, I think.
Thank you. Commissioner Travis?
Dr. Kenlaw, just a quick question, just rough figures here. What is the projection of the number of vocational trades that will be offered at the new facility?
Well, there'll be, there'll be three program areas. You've got electrical systems, and you've got industrial systems, and you've got computer integrated machining. And there's all sorts of certificates that can branch off from those.
Right.
Those are the three main program areas, but there are, that, those will be offered for credit. Those are college, those are college credit, those are degree programs. But there are, there's so much that you can do that branches off from that, that can be done through continuing education. That's not necessarily working toward a two-year degree, but it may be working to be certified in a particular area of electrical systems or industrial systems or even machining.
Right.
So that's all, that's all possible as part of that.
Right. And the last question I have, and I don't know if you know this answer or not, but, you know, we've got new industries coming to Rockingham County. We have existing industries. How many of these industries are you actually discussing to help them train individuals?
Well, that's a good question, because Lee Cochran and I have had that very conversation before Christmas, and she is in the middle of arranging for several industry reps to sit down with us. I say us, the county and the college collectively to talk about the type of training that's needed, and not only for what we're doing right now, but how do things look down the road? What do we need to be looking at? What types of equipment? But we're, we're in the middle of trying to set that meeting up. So we have advisory committees for all of our programs, and so we meet with them regularly. And so we get feedback from them, and we take that feedback, and it helps us to purchase certain, certain types of equipment for training that they need. So that's an ongoing process that we're always working on.
Now, the last question I have is, you know, I've been called from our existing industries in the county, and they realize in the next year and a half, two years, we're going to be creating a lot of jobs. Their biggest fear is they, they invested in their employers for training, and then this new stuff comes in that might be a little bit better, and we're not prepared to have training done for them, and these people will leave their industry and go work for these new companies. So they'll start from scratch. So I guess the question I have is, are you reaching out to some of the existing industries now to see what we can do to help them, you know, through this transition that we're doing?
Yes, we, we're in continuous contact with them through our customized training program, and that's money that really, it's really a statewide program. It funnels through the state, but we, we're able to do, we do a lot of free training for industry in this county, quite a bit. And so we, we're in contact with them regularly. Mary O'Neal is our customized training director, and so as new industry locates, in fact, we've already been in, in contact with some of the new industry that is, that is set to come here. And so we do that, because a lot of times, some of the, some of the incentive packages that are included has that customized training piece that we, that we're involved in. So that, we're, we're in contact with them regularly on some of the training that they do.
I think that's something that a citizenry don't really know that you're doing. And I, you know, if, hopefully on your website, you can put something out there and say, hey, this is who we're talking to, developing plans so we can train people. I think that'd be good information for a citizen to be able to read and know what's going on.
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you, Dr. Gunn.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Perdell?
And Dr. Kenlaw, I think I know the answer is, but we're working closely with the school system to address some of the needs. I know we got Early College over there at, at RCC, and hear great things about that. But, you know, part of our workforce development, I think we can reach to our, our school system. I see a couple of school board members.
Yeah, they're here, and.
They're here, and I know they're here supporting you.
Well, and, and we're very supportive of them, and I really appreciate them. We're, we're, I can tell you, since I've been here, we've made a lot of progress in the work that we're doing together. We have a lot of high school kids taking college courses. Now, COVID has really set us back a little bit with that. The Rocket Top Program is a great program for the apprenticeship. There is a tremendous amount that we can do together, and we've got some new things on the, on the table to, to implement this coming August, and we're excited about that. They have academies at each one of their high schools, and we're trying to partner with those academies so we can take more college courses out to the high schools where we're teaching on site. And so there's a lot that we can do together, and we're making progress. There's a lot more that we need to do, and I look forward to working with all of them, because I think that we do have a good relationship, and I think that's going, that's one of the most important things, I think, that we really need to, to work together, the two entities for the future of the county. I think it's going to be critical, without question.
Gentlemen, anyone else have questions?
Well, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Kenlaw, thank you for coming tonight. Dr. Gunn, we appreciate it. You know, this is a lot of money. This is a great opportunity for this community. And so I understand that we've all agreed that we're going to do quarterly updates.
Yes.
So we're looking forward to hearing from you guys in April.
Right, yeah, we've already signed up for each of, we've already signed up for each of the dates, so we're, we're on schedule.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to item number ten, Shetar Williams, Telamon Corporation, Project Pride.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As you said, my name is Shetar Williams. I'm the program coordinator for CSBG programs with Telamon Corporation. Is everyone able to see the overview I submitted?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so I'm just going to load through this, and you can stop me at any time and ask questions that you may have. So what is Telamon Corporation? We're a private nonprofit, and we started working with farm workers in rural North Carolina over fifty years ago. Since, our programs have expanded to take on various programs. We do housing and financial services. We have Head Start programs, and this is just one of the programs that we have under our workforce and career services umbrella. And that program is Project Pride, Personal Responsibility and Daily Endeavors. We are a self-sufficiency program, and we're also a designated community action agency. What is community action? Community action means that we are focused on serving the community and learning our information from them, having the community involved in every step of what we do, so that we're not assuming what the community needs. Every three years, we do an assessment of our partners, of people in the community, of past participants, to see exactly what those needs are and how we can designate them, and also how we can work with our partners to make sure we're leveraging our resources to the best of our abilities. We're funded by CSBG. CSBG is community service block grant dollars. That's funding that comes from federal dollars to DHHS through the Office of Economic Opportunity to us. The amount of funding that we have available, I'm sorry, I'm jumping all over the place. The amount of funding that we're applying for, for the program year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, is three thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. For Rockingham County, which always gets about sixty percent of the funding available allocated per county, is two hundred and one thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-eight. What we do with that funding is we provide childcare services. We provide employment opportunities, such as our WEX opportunity. It's like an internship. It's like an internship, people can work for Telemont while gaining experience in a field that they have not worked in before to help them hit their foot in the door and get into a new, hopefully more lucrative field where they can be more satisfied and hopefully have medical benefits and better pay any job that they just really would like to have. Let's see, we hold these meetings so that we can get the public opinion about our services and incorporate that into our application. And also, we're to keep the counties involved in every step of the process and make sure that the counties are well aware of what we're doing and have them review the application. Eligibility, those who are eligible for our program, you have to be 18 or older. You have to be a resident of Caswell, Person or Rockingham County. Males do have to be registered for selective service. And, oh, the income requirement is 200%. Historically, it was 125% of the federal poverty guideline for their household size, but that has changed due to COVID so that we can serve more people who are in need during this time. That limit has been increased to 200% of the federal poverty guideline. We are located in the NC Works in Reedsville. Our staff are mobile. We do have a vehicle, so we're able to travel socially distanced, of course, and meet with our customers as necessary. We've we've adapted a lot considering that the centers aren't open to the public currently. We do meet with people by appointment. We are still able to meet people in controlled environments to get them enrolled. We enroll people electronically and over the phone. We're doing everything we can to make sure that there's no cessationist services despite all the changes that have happened over the recent months. We're still helping people go to school. Lots of people are going to school online. In addition to the CSBG dollars that I'm here to talk about today, we also have additional CARES funding dollars. That is ballpark $395,000 and that is not split up per county like CSBG dollars. That's a big lump sum that we can use to serve any eligible county residents in our three-county service area. And really, the only difference between that funding and the CSBG funding eligibility-wise is that we do ask that to be good stewards of the money, we do have to have some sort of documentation of how an individual or a household has been impacted by COVID. So whether that's a positive test or a workplace notice, a workplace closure, or something of that nature, documents proving that they filed for unemployment due to COVID, we're able to assist with emergencies, paying rent, paying utilities. Those have been the biggest requests that we've seen at this point, but it's not limited to that. It's it's meant to be broad so that we can serve people as best we can. So whether that's medical equipment, PPE, childcare, so that they can work if they're a central worker, we're very flexible with that funding. So that's additional dollars that we have separate from this, but still serving the same group. I think I've rambled enough. Are there any questions from anyone?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do I see any questions? I've I've got just a couple of questions, if you could.
Yes, sir.
The CDBG breakout, you said that's not required to be broken out by county. How do you anticipate that money being spent? Would that be closely related to the 6040 that you mentioned earlier?
So CARES funding is separate from the CSBG funding and it's not broken out by county. That's correct. I do project it will be just because of population, but anything could happen. So say there's a a huge outbreak in one of the counties and for whatever reason, people need more help. The great thing about it not being allocated by county like that means that we can serve wherever the need is. But just based on population, I would assume that we might have probably have more people needing our assistance in Rockingham County.
About how many county residents do you anticipate serving adults? I see you also mentioned childcare, but adults. About how many county residents do you project helping?
Do you mean per pot of funding or just all of it together?
Yeah, for the $201,000, they were scheduled to do that tonight.
For the $201,000, we have set a goal of 120 and that's for all three counties. I would say 75 of those will likely be Rockingham County.
And how about childcare program? How many Rockingham County children do you anticipate serving with your childcare program?
So we pay for childcare, but the actual applicant that's enrolled in the program has to be 18 or older. So that varies year to year and depending on what parents need. So far this year, we haven't paid for any childcare for anyone and I think that's just because of the volatile situation with so many people being out of work or making other arrangements, schools being closed. But we do have funds available. It's kind of lumped in supportive services, so we can use those funds flexibly, you know, for transportation assistance, for PPE, for childcare. But we don't have a projected goal for childcare. It's on a as-needed basis, the way it's been budgeted.
Very good, thank you. Gentlemen, do you have other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Pirtle.
Thank you. Uh, do you, does your agency submit an annual report to the, with their summarizing their services provided in the communities?
We did not submit an annual report to you, but I can get an electronic version of that and send that to Ms. Woods.
Yeah, I don't, you don't craft a document every annually that says this is the services we provided in your community with these funds?
Just on me right now, I only have the printed version, but I can, I didn't submit it with the whole packet that I submitted to you, but I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, any more questions?
I've got one.
Commissioner Berger?
And it may be somewhere in the information we were provided. I just want to make sure and and then at least pull it out. So the roughly 201,000 that you're asking for, not necessarily directly from us, but through us, how much of that money goes to the residents of Rockingham County and how much goes to your overhead? Staff salaries and administrative cost?
So a total of about $60,000 will be given directly to residents or paid to their landlords, utility providers.
And is that the figure that's also, that $60,000 includes the childcare cost and I mean, that's?
Yes, sir.
That's above 70% administrative cost, which is pretty substantial in my book.
Do most, I think most nonprofits look at about a 25% or less overhead rate as their just, that does seem substantial. Can you answer any questions regarding that?
Well, that is direct to customer payments. That doesn't include workshops that we may have, which are on pause at the moment. That doesn't include staff travel and rent. Our indirect cost rate, it's in the budget, is indirect cost is actually 12.7%. And that's 12.7% of salaries and fringe. But the other expenses, we do have staff and we do have the van that we have to pay for upkeep on. But that's just direct payments. We do have membership fees and subscriptions that we have to pay for the database. The database that we're required to use by OEO is a $4,000 a year subscription. We do have membership to the North Carolina Community Action Agency. So it, but our indirect cost rate is 12.7%.
Those those membership fees that you're mentioning, is that per county or is that just overall?
That's overall and that's required as part of being a community action agency. We pay for membership and that covers some of the training that we're provided and conference attendance or discounts for conference attendance. And also, North Carolina Community Action Association has done a huge marketing campaign with a podcast and just different types of outreach on social media and commercials to promote the the CARES Act funding. And all the new initiatives that different community action agencies are doing. So community action agencies cover all 100 counties and we're just a small part of that. So we are required to pay those fees as well.
But the CARES Act funding is separate from what we're talking about here?
Yes, sir. But it is something that was given to community action agencies. At least that particular part of CARES Act funding was given to community action agencies and disbarred some of us. But yes, it is separate from CSBG dollars.
Do we have the ability to approve this and require a certain percentage to go to our citizens?
Unfortunately, no. The indirect cost rate is approved through DHHS and most of the expenses that are in there, that's what's required to run the program.
Okay, and more?
We have four staff, myself, three people located at the NC Works in Rockingham and in Raleigh, and I oversee that program as well as other programs.
Commissioner Richardson, you have a question?
Yes, Shetar, this is a kind of basic, how many employees do you have?
Just in Pride, there's only the three.
So you have three employees and I know this is kind of basic, but what are they doing on a day-to-day basis for their salaries?
On a day-to-day basis, they're actually quite busy lately. A lot of people are kind of scrambling to find out what resources are available during CARES, I mean, during this pandemic. And so we get a lot of calls, people seeking services that may not qualify. So we spend a lot of time working with other agencies. We're co-located with NC Works. We partner with the community colleges. We're helping people to go to school, providing case management services for them. People that are experiencing emergencies, we process their emergencies, sort of talking to their landlords, trying to get things situated, letting them know their rights if they're maybe being bullied or pressured to pay and they're unable to, explaining to them how the moratorium works. On a day-to-day basis, they're always working with people to help them reach their goals. Everyone that comes into our program should have specific goals for achieving their career, whatever their career goals may be, going to going to school, getting some sort of licensing or training. Some people may not be specifically looking to go to school or they might be have other resources that pay for it, but they need help with clothing, with food, with school supplies for their kids. We pay for summer camp for people so that they could work and their kids were out of school, they needed somewhere to put them. So on a day-to-day basis, our case managers are getting in touch with people every day, meeting with them, coordinating with them, getting the necessary documentation and working with them to overcome these barriers to whatever their costs are.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Commissioner Berger?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Often grants like these are competitive, Ms. Williams. Is there anybody else that submits an RFP on behalf of Rockingham County to provide these services besides Telemont Corporation?
Not at the moment. So to apply for those funds, someone must first apply to become a community action agency. And OEO actually reached out to Telemont back in 2015, 2016 and realized that we had a similar mission. We were already doing similar work. We just weren't working in those counties. And the pot of funding in those counties is not very large and they said, well, can we step in being a multi-state organization and operate a program there that would provide the services that were needed there? And so we applied for the the designation and we received that and then we were able to apply for CSBG funding.
Does Telemont Corporation provide or provide any oversight to any other block grants for similar counties with these services?
No, just the three-county area. Other agencies are responsible for the other 100 counties.
So you just do person, Caswell and Rockingham?
We do operate other programs in other counties where our biggest program is the National Farm Worker Job Program and that's mostly counties to the east and south.
And I just want to, I just want to clarify a question that was asked earlier. Do I understand you to say that 12.5% of your budget is salaries and that roughly the other 50, you had 58% that goes towards other administrative cost and roughly 30% goes to the services that you provide to the community?
So $60,000 goes directly to customers or to their meeting their direct needs.
Which is about 30% of your total budget, right?
Right, goes directly to them.
Okay.
But the other parts of that funding can be used for programs to assist them or paying for workshops, things like that. 12.7% is what we call, the 12.7% of our salaries and fringe is for indirect. And what we call indirect is our overheads. That goes to the the everything, the IT, the paying for IT, paying for our corporate development department. So that's what that is for, the 12.7%. So that pays, that's like our share of paying for everything that Telemont needs to operate. We still do have to pay rent for the offices that we're in and we still do have to pay for maintenance on the campus.
Ms. Williams, Commissioner Berger has a question.
Memberships or activities that were required to be involved.
Ms. Ms. Williams, you also mentioned earlier that due to COVID, y'all have been unable to have some of these workshops or many workshops at all. So is that money just building up in a fund or what's happening with those funds at this point?
Those funds will be reallocated. We are in the process of realigning our budget, so we create a budget, a whole 12 months in advance of when we even get started. So we are having to currently realign our budget to move those funds into direct services. Or for example, if we're not traveling. So it's very likely that some of the funds that you're seeing that are going for travel or rent and things like that are going to be reallocated back to direct services anyway. But right now, it's we're just, there's so much uncertainty into what's going on and we're still figuring out exactly how things are going to work. But those funds, this is on par with what we've previously approved in these counties and we've been successful at helping close to 200 people every year with rents, utilities, going back to school, getting better jobs, rising above poverty level. We've actually sometimes allocated more money than we we ended up using and we end up rolling that money over and helping more people following here.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Commissioner Berger?
Yep, Lance, this is directed just to Lance. As far as time. Um, as far as timeframe, do you know of any time urgency on this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Then I knew that we tabled this. We do have some local folks that are members of this board. Maybe we can discuss some things with them and, and kind of go from there.
There's a motion. Uh, do we have a second?
Uh, I'll second it, but I'd like to add, I'd like to see an audit report on this.
They forwarded that.
You got the 990. I haven't seen that, but, uh, okay, I'll see if I can get it.
So there, there is a 990, and, um, there is an audit report on the whole organization available. And the document that I gave Ms. Woods for your review, you can put all the questions you have on it, and I will answer those to the best of my ability right away. But also, those will go to OEO, and any questions that you have there, finance team can get back and explain everything that's going on or look into anything that might be questionable. That's what that was.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We appreciate it. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor of tabling the request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll be in touch with our questions.
Thank you.
With that, number 11, uh, Mr. Manager, is any new business tonight?
No, sir.
Very good. With that being said, we'll move to Commissioner Comments. And Commissioner Travis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a couple of things I just want to bring up. Uh, you know, I know this board in the past talked about it, looking into a shooting range. I didn't know, uh, if we're still discussing the shooting range or what, but I would definitely encourage a committee to be formed. I know, uh, I'm not in favor of any, uh, county money to be spent towards, uh, the shooting range, but, you know, I know there was a million-dollar grant from the state to look into it, and I mean, uh, I'd like to have a committee formed to look into it and the possibilities of getting private investors or, or something to, to run it. Uh, but I, I'd like to know what, what is the status of that shooting range? Um, the other thing is, uh, over the Christmas holiday, we had, uh, one of our famous, uh, citizens in the county, uh, David Anthony Tony Rice passed away, and if you don't know him, uh, he's a famous guitar player, uh, and he lived in Readsville. So I know, uh, my understanding is, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna do something to recognize him and his family, I guess, in February. I just wanted to make note for the citizens to know, know about that. Uh, you know, Grammy Award winner, and so I think that's a, a great accomplishment by him. But, uh, with that, uh, I have no further comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Commissioner Richardson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations again to Mr. Tom Alderman and to Mr. Garland Pascal, and many thanks on behalf of all the citizens for their services to the county. You know, as we enter 2021, uh, I think my three highest priorities as a commissioner deal with opioid alcohol addiction problems in the county, workforce readiness, and of course, dealing with this COVID, uh, problem, seeking relief. But I would like to encourage all the citizens from the county to be engaged in these things, uh, supporting the victims and encouraging victims of addiction of whatever type it is, helping them wherever they can and helping agencies that help them. We have many great programs for workforce development, particularly for high school students. The Rocket Top itself can reach any high school student in the county with their four different programs. But a lot of times, these students need some encouragement to participate. And so, uh, parents and uncles and aunts, uh, speak with these young peoples, make sure they examine the options that are available to them, uh, right here at RCC. Because as was alluded to earlier, uh, we're getting a lot of jobs in the county, but we need to provide the expert personnel to fill those jobs. That's what attracts the industry more than anything else to our county is our workforce. And finally, in regard to the COVID, uh, situation, vaccinations appear to be, they're already in the county, but we need a lot more, and we look forward to, uh, all of our citizens having the opportunity to take these vaccinations and be protected from COVID-19. But until that time, we need to keep up our efforts with the standard protection that we can do, wearing masks and, uh, wearing masks, keeping, uh, social distancing and avoiding groups, those things that we hear over and over again. So I would challenge all the citizens of our county to be participants, uh, in these priorities for the coming year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Perle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, uh, thank my colleague for recognizing, uh, Mr. Rice and the contributions he made to this county. Uh, we also lost another gentleman in Rockingham County that I was privileged to call a friend, and that was Chief Jerry Welch up in Madison. Uh, condolences to his family and his wife, Gaye. But Chief Welch, a lot of people may have not known, but he was one of the founders of the North Carolina Chiefs Association, which I proudly am a member, uh, North Carolina Police Chiefs Association, which I proudly, uh, call myself a lifetime member. But he also had the distinction for being a police chief for his entire 30-year career. He worked for Madison, New Bern, and Madison, uh, and he served on the town board at Madison after he retired from policing. Uh, Chief Welch, uh, there was never a doubt what he was thinking and what he was around you. He always was willing to share his opinion, and I respected him so much for that. Uh, but condolences to, uh, to his family. We lost a, a Jim in Jerry Welch. Uh, also, uh, the last thing I'll say is, uh, Commissioner Richardson touched on, uh, the COVID-19 and the opportunity to take the vaccination. I share with you that in my new line of work since I retired, I'm in the funeral business, and as part of that, uh, I had the opportunity to be vaccinated along with my coworkers. And, uh, I share with you that, uh, I had a sore arm and a, a little bit of a headache the next day, and I felt fatigued, but my wife said that was normal. But, uh, I, I, I just share with you, when the opportunity comes, please consider, uh, taking that vaccine. Uh, the Health Department, I come over here to the Health Department, it was, uh, as great of an experience as you can have in getting a vaccination, but I felt totally confident in, in the folks that I talked to and what they shared with me about the vaccine and the information I read. And, uh, I think to, uh, we should continue to, uh, as Commissioner Richardson said, to , uh, social distance, uh, wear the mask, and, uh, let's, let's make sure that we, we do the right thing. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Perle. Commissioner Berger?
Yes, want to thank Dr. Kenlaw and Dr. Gunn for coming and giving us the update as far as RCC and the workforce development, um, and everything that's going on with that quarter cent sales tax. Also want to recognize a couple of folks that are here, Paula Raichstraw and Doug Isley from the School Board, thank you for attending. Those of you who, uh, don't know, I believe they're meeting next Monday night. Location has been moved. Uh, it's Readsville High School, is that correct? I believe they're anticipating, uh, some interest in that meeting. Uh, just make sure that if you do attend, you go to the right place. Uh, also in attendance are members of the Board of Elections, Tony Reese and Bonnie Ferguson. We certainly appreciate, uh, y'all being here, uh, as well. And with that, I think just wish everyone a happy new year, and that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. And wow, what a good news we got with the audit report. So that's, uh, you know, those kind of things, they're, they're kind of hard to get excited about, but when you see the numbers are good, we appreciate the diligence. County manager, thank you for your efforts. Staff, we appreciate everyone during this tough year to, uh, hold the reins tight, to control government spending. We appreciate that a lot. And RCC, we appreciate you guys coming tonight and your presentation. That's a very exciting thing for the county, as Commissioner Travis pointed out, the new jobs coming to the community. We're going to need people to fill those jobs, so this is, is very timely. So thank you, RCC, for stepping up on this. And that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.